2023 Arnold City Council meeting. You know, all council members are present and the councilwoman is present tonight. We always start with a pledge of allegiance, so I invite you to stand up in person.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to our way forward which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And just now there's the approval of the agenda. We're on one motion that will approve the agenda and the consent agenda. And I'll go over that before we make the vote. Any real estate state established the consent tonight?
Sure, I can, I, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as written in number one through fourteen.
Oh, I'd like to call number ten, please.
So what we've got on the consent agenda tonight is number one, the city council meeting minutes of March twenty-seventh. Number two, claims and bills. Number three, approval of gambling license, Arnold baseball, resolution number seventy-three fifty-seven. Number four is approval of rental license. Number five is next work session draft agenda. Number six is approval of collective bargaining agreement with IUOE Local forty-nine. Number seven is delegated contract process, DCP, agreement with MINDOT, resolution number seventy-three fifty-six. Number eight is the water main replacement project, twenty-two dash twenty-three, change order number two. Number nine is twenty-twenty-three sanitary sewer inspection. Number ten will pull off and do after Parks Report. Number eleven is appointment of twenty-twenty-three seasonal employees B two. Number twelve was LA twenty-three dash three, Joseph Gilhorn, H plus U Construction, two hundred ways at a Boulevard West, conditional use permit, resolution number seventy-three fifty-eight. Number thirteen is twenty-twenty-three sewer rehabilitation award, twenty-three dash fourteen. And fourteen is authorization to accept Brad, shown her resignation. Any items on there anybody else like to talk about more and take it off and set? You see none, I have a motion with ten to take off.
Second?
On favor say aye.
Aye.
If that passes, four zero. Okay, Parks Report.
Thank you. Tonight I have a request to proceed with the approval of Hackberry Master Plan Design Services. So for the last several years, the Parks Commission has had Hackberry Park on the radar for a remodel. Back in twenty sixteen, the House one forty Hackberry Hill, which sits right in the middle of the park, that was purchased by the city in a lifetime estate. It was just vacated December twenty-twenty-two, which triggered the response from Park Commission to want to go ahead and start this master plan process. So for the park, we're looking, again, just to start that design process with, or sorry, not design, but master plan services with Bolton and Make. And then over the next few years, we can go into design and then construction sometime in twenty-twenty-five.
It's exciting. I know we've been sad for the family, of course, but I know we've been, it's the first time ever that we've kind of put all this together and we've been waiting for a long time, so it's exciting for the Parks Commission to be able to put together a good study on what's, what the possibilities are for, you know, the youth sports and all that stuff, so. I don't know if anybody else has any other questions about it?
Yeah, so, so just more FYI, they're working that house down, right, the fire department?
Yes.
More FYI, thanks for bringing up the neighborhood.
We have, over the next month and a half, you'll see the police department using it for training. You'll see the fire department, and I believe the final burn is scheduled for May twenty-third.
Isn't May, yeah, I should, it's on my calendar, but yeah, I thought that was, we might want to put lots of notices on that, to be honest, because that's been a longstanding house. But yeah, you're right, it is, I think it's May twenty-third. I mean, I could be wrong, but it is a May, but maybe we could have forgot that out. I guess my one question, and it's, so Brian and I have been talking to some of the neighbors. By no means have we talked to all the neighbors.
Sure.
But they, they've, they've shared some, I would say, enhancement opportunities. And so I'm just wondering how that kind of feedback is going to be funneled into this plan? And then how do we get, because I don't know if the handful of residents I've talked to represent the whole, because it's just been more, I would say, events or, you know, on a market, people just grabbing and giving me some feedback, but do we, how does that fit into here? Because I don't think, I think it's a pretty active park, so that's not crazy. But I do think like some of the neighbors have pretty specific feedback when it comes to parking. Specifically, the two roads that go would be east-west. Lots of feedback from the residents along there that the users of the park park on their yards at times. And then also, if, if people park on both sides, there's a question whether or not like an emergency vehicle could get down. I don't, I'm just saying this is what their feedback is. So I'm just wondering, like, how do we, how do we feather some of that feedback in there and then make sure that that is kind of the consensus? Because I also don't want to be, put like no, say, oh, we're going to do new parking on one side and then the rest of the neighborhood's like, well, that wasn't what we wanted.
Sure.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, well, I think with this, really what we're getting are some concepts of what we can do with the park. I know the Park Commission, right now, they're actively communicating with users of the park and will be moving to communicate with neighbors as well. So really, once we have that framework for what we would like to see done there, that gives us an opportunity then to engage the public and really refine that plan. So design would happen in twenty-four. So the idea is that we have some time to work with to, to receive that feedback and refine that, or that process.
I feel like you want to say something.
Well, I was just going to say that this kind of dovetails a little bit in our work session item in it. The, the other nice thing is that, not nice, but the, the road network around this park is not in terrible condition, but it's starting to creep up on our radar for work. So one of the things we'll also be looking at as we do these things is, do we, do we tie in road? We know from years of communicating with some of the residents around that park, we know that the park itself and some of the existing properties have drainage issues and there's some stormwater systems in there that are very, very antiquated. And so as we, that's part of the reason of wanting to do this master plan is looking at all those different things that are out there that we would need to incorporate into any kind of project we would do with that park. And that helps us inform and helps the Parks Commission be able to do even more of that public outreach and what have you, so. Yeah, but the other thing I would say is that we've been talking about this park since I've been here for eight years and we've been talking about this park since I first got here. And we know, yeah, we've got a bunch of issues with that park. And so this is, this is an effort to kind of gather all that information in one place and then start talking about what's the art of possible here.
Well, the two things are during the journey of parking, those are the two, number, number one and two that I hear. Well, and if you go over there in the spring, it is a little monkey in the middle, so.
And there, you know, there are, there are years where we have not been able to use the two T-ball outfield for, for the majority of the summer season because they just, they just get soggy and stay soggy. There's been years where we couldn't even mow it, so we can't put tall grass. Yeah, that's part of, that's all part of what we want to kind of.
Okay, so drainage plan would be in there too? Okay, cool.
So I have some questions or comments, and I would agree, because I have heard about the drainage as well. Actually, last year when I was over in that neighborhood. But just conservatively, at least looking on Google Maps and doing kind of a look at that area, you know, maybe within a thousand feet or so, you've got at least a hundred homes. And I, my question is, what's the downside to listening first? Because it costs nothing to listen, and I know last year in Parks, we had a really successful listening session at Casco regarding that park. And I, my preference would be the listening first. In fact, you could utilize Parks Commission in this way in terms of turning into one of their regular or maybe a work session into a listening session and noticing that ahead of time. It's not going to cost us too much more in terms of time with the schedule. But I do feel that that, that fact coming as a front end of the project rather than as we move into it might serve us well related to further engagement in the future. Because, you know, the folks who probably know that area best are the ones who live quite close to it, whether it's drainage or wish lists for, you know, infrastructure or, you know, whatever the case may be, in park equipment or sports or whatnot. Because I just, you know, my feeling is that the listening portion of it, where they were designing a park or, you know, where there's homeowners looking at their own kitchen, I think the most successful designs come out of really good listening on the front end. I mean, if that costs nothing, it's not going to likely take a lot of time. And it also, it fosters a lot of good trust and love within the community. And it also could prevent potentially unnecessary work going forward with whatever contractor we, we use. And I do have a question about Bolton and Make along those lines. I just think that this type of, it may be reordering of some of this business is going to allow us a better opportunity to get it right from the get-go. Because I think we've learned, I'll speak for myself, that communication really matters as it relates to doing infrastructure changes, and this park has not had a major change within quite a long time. So I think it demonstrates our willingness to listen and to take into consideration the feedback. I think it also allows our residents to become part of the experts. And when I take off my council hat and put on my resident hat, I can see that it might be appropriate to allow some of the feedback early on. Let's see, what else?
So I was going to actually say, that's actually what Parks actually asked me to recommend is that there's actually, step one would be, but I would not do it here. I would actually do it at the park. So I would say, if you look at attendance here versus at the parks, it's significantly higher.
So part of the, the whole idea of this too is that these things, this, and I would, I would say it's, it's not first, we've been, you know, again, I've been here for eight years and we've been talking to the residents and the Arnold Baseball Association and the Arnold Football Association for years. So it's not like we don't know, one, what's wrong, what the issues are at the park, nor what the, the potential future needs are at the park. So I think at this point, it's more of a refinement in those things. Again, we've had a couple Parks Commissioners, this is, this has been in focus for a couple of years of reaching out and having all these meetings. So one of the ideas of this is we can, we can put that all together and then certainly facilitate the Parks Commission as they do any further outreach they would like to do. One of the things we did, we did reach out with, with Bolton and Make on, having learned last time, or in our last effort is just making sure we also have a time and materials component in working with them so that we can support those other things that the Parks Commission might want to do in that vein.
I guess, I guess, I hear you. I mean, if we delayed this by a month or two, it doesn't really change much. And I would just put in there, happy to have time to let us go. I mean, I guess, what does it, what does it hurt, I mean, to kind of agree with? And that was kind of what the Parks Commission asked me to bring up is that they're already starting to do it, but that was kind of my early point, is I've only, I haven't talked to everybody?
I guess I'm just, just counter that with, we're only bringing the, this because the Parks Commission voted for us to bring this to you, so.
No, I agree, but I, I think, I think they even, you know, Elise is saying that I think Parks even reached out to me and said, hey, can we just clarify that we do want to have a, a touch point? Again, I would recommend it be there, and maybe it's in June, right? I mean, because I, there's, I, I, like I said, I can't say I've talked to everybody. I understand you guys have that feedback, but there's also new residents and.
And I have a question, could the motion be amended to allow for engagement of public, a listening session prior to approval?
Our, our motion doesn't really address the timeline as proposed, it's, it's the funding part, right? Correct. So.
But we can do one regardless.
All I'm saying is, we have Parks Department, you know, I don't think we need to get too deep into help, you know, telling them what to do, how to do it. They, their responsibility is to get public engagement, get it done. I think from our standpoint, we're just approving the expenditure at this point. There's a proposed timeline in there, but if Parks decides they're going to adjust that timeline, they're just, we're just letting us know, not necessarily looking for our direction, at least to be honest.
But I think it's good, it's good guidance just as a, as not part of the motion, but just guidance to say it's probably better to get there to have more information earlier rather than later than just kind of follow that guideline. And I think that probably is, probably, probably good enough to have that guidance with the motion to approve the payment.
Yes, no, absolutely. I mean, and that's, that's the whole point of, you know, we, when we do things like these master plan design services, we're, we're basically taking, you know, Bolton and Make and getting authorization to make them an extension of our staff and so that we can start putting work orders against those efforts that we want to do to, to, to go out, to do more public engagement, if that's really what we want to do, or to, to begin to consolidate some of this information.
Because I think the man's point, the minute we start doing a motion to say this is, it's a particular timeframe that changes, again, come on board, I can change that.
No, I, I think, I, I, my point is that I just want to make sure there's time allowed for, for, for Parks to be able to double-click into neighborhood feedback. That, that's all.
Absolutely, and that, that's, that's not, this is not supposed to preclude any of that.
Okay.
Part of the reason we do have this timeline is if, if this does keep progressing and you do want to go into some kind of design activity in twenty-four, we need to be, we need to be done with this part sometime in twenty-three so we can inform those budgetary decisions and be going out for grants and things like that while we're in the design phase. So, so and there's, so if, if we get a bunch of public feedback and it says, hey, take a left turn, take a right turn, that's fine. The only thing that happens is then we say, well, our timeframe is going to, you know, it's going to shift backwards in time.
Okay, so Adam, can you explain then, if this motion is approved tonight, then what's the next step for Parks?
Well, we will obviously let Bolton and Make know that we now have an agreement with them and some of the preliminary stuff that we know that Josh and I have, that we can just hand over to them so they can get that data in when we're done. And then work with, work with Brian and the team that's been on the Hackberry Subcommittee for the Parks Commission to, I mean, with them again, and, and, you know, we have this little committee for the park that we can just keep meeting and moving forward with whatever it is they want to do.
So that's a subcommittee? The Hackberry is a subcommittee?
Yep, it's been standing subcommittee for maybe three years now.
So is that business discussed at regular Parks meetings, or is it?
Both.
Both?
Both work sessions and regular Parks Commission meetings, and sometimes it's come up there. Those committees are all small enough, they don't trigger any of our open meeting law requirements, so that sometimes they'll just meet out on the park. Like I said, they, they've been having discussions with the Arnold Baseball Association and others for a couple of years now.
It sounds like there's been a lot of engagement and it's been piecemeal or not noticed as a, this is the time for the public or residents or neighbors or whoever to come and gather and really give feedback in their place. So that would be my direction, and I'm not telling Parks how to go about the timeline, but that piece should be coming in the front end. So approving the ability to go forward with a plan is appropriate. However, that piece that Councilmember Seals is referring to that's coming out of Parks, and I would question, I guess, why this has landed here if Parks wanted to engage first. This is significant, I think it needs to be addressed.
So, I mean, really, we're not making any decisions on this process. We had to get it started with Bolton and Make. I know Brian, we've had many conversations about timing for when we can get out and have that meeting with the surrounding neighborhood. That is on their agenda. We are moving forward with that. We're not proceeding, or moving into a design phase without having talked to that neighborhood first. We are taking those steps.
I can make sure that based on the preliminary schedule that we get something scheduled in. Also, I know that, I don't know where it's DJ. I know we have a pancake breakfast, which is right over in that area, right before some of the starts, so maybe we can work with the fire department, since that's like right next to Hackberry Park. That's also just another touch point, because there'll be so many people, so. I, I think the Parks has been supportive of this, I think they just wanted to make sure that, because they have been getting feedback from associations that use the park, and I would say there's, again, handfuls of residents, but again, I don't know if that, you know, sometimes the loudest voice isn't actually the muted voice of the park, so. So as long as, as, as long as we take that feedback into the plans, I think I'm good with it. That would be the only thing I would ask, is that we take that feedback.
The main direction is that we get feedback earlier rather than later and have some type of public get-together at the park.
Right, so it wouldn't be that Bolton and Make is coming up initially with concept A, B, or C, and then having input, it would be input prior to coming up with this?
Correct, and if I can also just clarify, it, it's never Bolton and Make coming up with the plan. Bolton and Make, we, we, we use their landscape architect team to take the ideas that the Parks Commission staff are providing them. You know, they have, they have the tools to give us some nice graphic displays to scale and do some, do some calculations and, and stuff and use their expertise to tell us, well, if you want to, if you want to build a, if you want to build a new baseball field with an agglion infield, this is, this is what the going rate is today. So that's what we're leaning on them for, that the relationship we've had with them has never really been a, hey, just go away by yourself, consult and come up with three. It's, it's no, we sit down in these, these spaces. I know Councilmember Seals sat in a bunch of them with us with, for some beach and I think some for Islam Lake Road, when we turned that into a trail, it's very, it's meant to be very collaborative, but they have some skills and some software and some tools that we just don't have in our staff. So this, this gives us the ability to say, hey, we need to, can you, can you, can you show us? If we tried to do two baseball fields and a soccer field, for example, what's that look like on this space and they can turn that kind of stuff around for us? Does that, does that help? I mean.
But it's never just them coming up with it, they get all the feedback first before they start coming up with, putting all those things together.
And then sometimes we've leaned on them for, okay, well, let's get the staff out, let's have, let's have some of your personnel do this public engagement. And so we have those, we've done those things as well. But in this case, all we're asked, really asking for is the ability to use them to help us do those things if we can't do ourselves.
Do they specialize in municipal parks? Is that one of their areas?
They do, they have, they have a whole office of landscape architects to do pretty much all the municipal type work, whether that be parks or, you know, public, from public works or city halls and that sort of thing.
And one other question, historically, have any of the Parks Commissions or any of these subcommittees ever involved citizen? Does it mean citizen representatives?
Owners.
I mean, not commissioners, do you ever have folks from the community part of the subcommittees looking at these parks?
There have been, there have been times where, I'm trying to think of an exact example, but that's where they brought, brought somebody in to, you know, where we just had a meeting and said, oh, you're, you're, you're a particular stakeholder or resident or whatever that has a particular passion or what have you for this kind of item, and then invited them to, to participate certainly.
Like Todd Camery is a good example at Big Island. He's a farmer vet, was wheelchair-bound, so he gave a very different perspective of things that we should think about as we're looking at AD trails. You know, you know, when you look at first glance, you're like, well, does the whole island? And he's like, no, so it was, that would be, that's one that comes to mind, where we did bring in just a resident in that had some thoughts, so.
No, it sounds like it has the opportunity to be a very positive collaborative experience.
We're the same thing with Long Lake, I don't know, Long Lake.
Hold the trail.
The trail, we had a whole committee and working with, besides with, with the Parks Commission and other people that are in the neighborhood and come up with all the right ideas, so. And so sometimes just don't know what comes out and who's interested, if anybody's interested. Because the more, the more minds and the voices, the better if they get the ideas, so.
That makes sense.
All right, you have a motion.
What, you two want to go with a motion then?
I think we just approve, I think we gave guidance from what we gave us, we just approved it.
Yeah, it sounds like we're not changing the motion, but simply giving guidance for the record with the motion.
So we, we need a motion to approve, we need a motion to approve that very hard master plan design services through Bolton and Make tomorrow.
Second?
On favor say aye.
Aye.
A little bit of S is four zero. Okay, great. We're going to go bring down number ten.
I have another question, Josh.
Sure.
Did we get an update on the tree thing then? I sent you an email, do you remember?
Yeah.
I know it might be too late this year.
It is too late this year. I do have a meeting tomorrow with Hattie County cities that work with the Tree Canopy Eco-Growth Cohort. So at this meeting, they give a lot of updates on grant opportunities for cities, on, we're going to be talking about Arbor Day and Earth Day, just some things, unique things that cities are doing. So that is, that is on our radar, it is very important. We're also working on finishing our runaway tree inventory and after that, going ahead and developing our tree management program for the city. So these are all things that they are applying to us.
So my question to the rest of you guys was, so the, the city implement, they have, I think it's annual. So every year they have an annual for residents, what did I, what did I, is it Bearwood Tree?
Yep, Bearwood Tree, they also do little west sampling of trees as well.
Bearwood Tree program, so it's like residents can get in a lot of them. I don't know if there's a fee, but it's, if it is, it's very minimal. And I thought it was a, just a cool program that they had.
I know Mandina did it last year for Earth Day. I don't know if they're doing that again this year, but it's very low-cost natives. I want to say it was birch, maybe others, but they were very expensive for a significant diameter.
Mm-hmm, I just remember it was, some of the first things, it was pretty cool, they've done it for a long time.
Yeah.
Anything else on parks?
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm, I'm with that mindset.
So for the golf course, I, I'm an optimist, I am hoping that we open next week. They still have quite a bit of snow in the house, and we need to dry out, but we are looking good. The Park staff, they finished rebuilding the irrigation satellite boxes over the winter. That is a huge upgrade to the golf course, we needed it desperately. So we're looking forward to an operating irrigation system this year. And one of the most exciting things for the golf course this year is we have a new junior league that's starting. We are anticipating up to sixty kids joining, we already have forty signed up for this year.
What ages are they? Ballpark?
Seven to twelve.
Okay, that's cool.
And then we, we're working with the schools as well, they'll be coming, starting with next week, doing some practices at the golf course. They're going to do a little cleanup first before they start golfing, which is great. Really focused on, on junior rounds this year. We're really excited to see them come in, they're very excited to be there, can't wait to see it happen. I did hear they're supposed to be snow this weekend also, so.
Yeah, they, they.
Parks, some of the tasks we have coming up, we have the restoration of the, the grounds at Crystal Bay Playground. So we did the playground improvement, now we just need to restore the grounds after the construction equipment was in. We'll be going through spring transitions, installing docks, doing playground inspections. We have the demo of the house at Hackberry. And one of the items that the Parks Commission is working on right now is a supplemental pickleball location. So at the last meeting, they turned down the golf course, and so they're looking at some of the other options around the city. And, yeah, that's about it.
So they're, so they've got two options, and then I, I sent you an email that I got from a resident asking us to look back at other options, so.
We're looking at everything, and that will be a discussion point at the next Parks Commission meeting.
Cool.
Awesome.
Tosh sent you, he sent you, sorry, were you going to say something?
No.
Well, since you mentioned it, I meant to ask something. We're still on Parks with the house that's going to be demo at Hackberry. Is there anything to be salvaged from that property, or has that already happened?
Most of it has, yeah, they, they've gone through that. Most, most everything is out of it. There are some paints and chemicals that will need to be removed, they did the asbestos abatement. So most of it is ready to go.
I was going to say, I just want to think the fire department's been through a lot, so there might be much.
Yes.
They didn't light it on fire, but I heard that they did some damage.
I think the police were going to get it.
It was all good.
They, they are, police were going to do something.
Yeah.
So the, the department residents and their family took what they wanted out of the building. And then I think there were some appliances and things like that that we can pull in and we'll go into the cleanup day. The cleanup day to go to be reused by the Salvation Army or whatever.
That's good timing, I'm glad that that coming up. Okay, that's it, thanks.
All right, we'll get to number ten, which is adoption of the new stormwater pollution prevention program, twenty-two dash twenty-nine, I think it must be yours.
That, that's mine, just the, the real quick overview is that as a holder of a new MS four permit, which was, the state revises every, I think, five, ten years. One of those requirements is we have to update our stormwater pollution prevention program. So we've been working on that for about the past year plus. And so got, got a finished document in front of you. I also just threw in there, just so you know, in Exhibit B, this was not for approval, but for information in case it got lost, was some proposed edits to our, our code, which I'm actually going to wrap into our, our code revision process that we're already doing this year. There's a couple things we have to, we have to add in there to be compliant with our, with our permit. But, yep, looking, looking to adopt the, the plan.
I have questions on this one, so I'm looking at, it's a really long document, but I'm looking at chapter seventy. looking at chapter seventy-nine, construction site runoff control.
What do you think's that?
Uh, I'm gonna say it was about two oh five. I don't have, I printed out the messages here. This is where the edits, the heavy edits were. And it was in section seventy-nine dash seven? Where the red started, all the red lighting, is that the area that you're referring to in exhibit B, the edits? It revolve, it involves stormwater prevention, pollution prevention among construction sites?
And yes, so those are, those are proposed edits for the ordinance changes.
Okay, this, this is where my question comes in, because this is, is this specifically related to construction site runoff and erosion?
Yes.
Okay, so what is the purpose of these edits?
Uh, I have to go over that again. Well, we'll get that portion of it in the reclassification portion, right? Yes.
But we're looking to adopt these edits tonight, is that correct?
No.
No.
No, that's what I say, exhibit B was just basically a read ahead for you.
Okay.
Exhibit A is what the motion is asking you to adopt, which is just the, the, um, the program.
Just the program, okay. That clarifies, but, um, would you mind answering, is it, uh, something you can answer tonight?
Two oh five or two oh six, two oh seven, right?
Yeah, section two oh three.
It's a lot of red lines around the erosion control and, um, hazardous material control at construction sites.
Check them out, like, letter F? Is that in the corner over there?
Um, yeah, so like, uh, F is an example.
Yep.
Of where instead of, uh, uh, basically replacing what we had in our code in those sub, um, paragraphs, uh, referring instead, uh, to, to the, uh, to the, to the state permit. So it's a, it's changing to a, um, um, what's, what's the term? So when we refer to other codes, uh, it's a.
Just the props reference.
It, it's, it's just a reference. Instead of changing our code and rewording our code, we're just saying.
Reword, reference, write in their section.
We, we use, we use this, this state statute or this, this state requirement.
So you're, you're considering regurgitating the statute?
Yes. Yes, I believe that's what this section is.
So just to clarify, we're not, we're not moving in the direction of lowering standards with regard to mitigation?
No, actually the standards have, have agreed with this latest set of permit.
It's not completely clear looking at the edits. So as long as, that's the general question here is are we ensuring that we're moving in a direction of appropriate stewardship on construction sites?
Yeah, most of those, yeah, all, all those standards are generally becoming more restrictive, not less restrictive.
Okay. Cool, very good.
And, and knowing that, I'll be prepared to give you some more detailed answers on those sections of code when we bring them before you.
Great, thank you.
Okay, have a motion?
Sure, I'll make it.
Can I get back to this?
I'm, I'm looking. Number ten, I, I'll make a motion to adopt, um, the new stormwater pollution prevention program project, number twenty-two dash zero two nine.
Second.
Exhibit A.
Exhibit A.
Yes.
Second, ten.
Okay, in favor, say aye.
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 Now that passes four zero. Okay, I know I don't see our development draft report out here, but I'll, since you're here, I'll say, did you have anything to report for, um, development and, for each?
Yeah, good evening. Uh, so we have just been busy with land use applications. We had a deadline, um, the other week and published our legal notice. We have, I think, nine or ten applications right now set for the planning commission, so we're very busy in the department drafting all those memos and reviewing all those applications. Um, I'm available for questions as you guys review those, uh, with the legal to be published, but the packet should be published the end of the week. Also, we've been getting, uh, more ramped up in our building permit, uh, phone calls, our inspector and our officials have been very busy out on site and going out to all those inspections. So with the, uh, summer just around the corner, people are looking to do projects and our phone calls are amazing with that. So just staying busy as, as a department, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, for me, it's Ron.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, sorry, we've been ducking in and out of the meeting. We were having a little bit of video problems again, so that is fixed and we are now streaming again. And, uh, other than that, I do have a slide for building permits tonight. So as you can tell, um, quarter of the way through the year, um, this is still our slow period, so you can see if, uh, March was a little lower this year than last year, but not a whole lot. And if you go to the power right-hand corner, you can see that we're at twenty-four percent of projected revenue and we're twenty-five percent of it through the years. Like, we're right on track for the year and we're actually, uh, you know what, uh, three, I'll call it three and a half percent in joints ahead of last year, so. So it's, the revenue is still looking good and we'll, we'll see what the rest of the year brings as we move into the busy season and maybe just for, uh, talk about.
It's busy.
They're very busy, so that, that would also be promised.
Right. Right, any questions for Ron? Okay, thanks. Um, City Attorney, someone's been here.
Mr. Mayor, I can't provide nothing, uh, for the City Attorney, but we're going to close session and cover my topic.
Okay. City Administrator, your chief report.
Uh, just a, a couple, uh, quick updates, uh, uh, with the engineer, my engineer hat on. Um, this morning we did have our public works, uh, facility groundbreaking, uh, ceremony. Uh, so we, uh, we're officially and ceremonially, uh, underway, uh, at the new public works facility. As you know, we had on, uh, consent today about the, uh, cured-in-place, uh, pipe, um, project, uh, before it was in about forty-four hundred feet of pipelining, uh, which we'll do down now in the passageway, which is our point area, uh, which should close out our pipelining, sewer pipeline, uh, efforts in that part of the city. Mentioned in the work session, uh, Fox Street, uh, which is our big project for this year, uh, goes out for bid tomorrow and we have a bid opening on the sixth of May. Uh, we also have the parking lots projects, uh, that we're closely following, uh, and staggering those, so we'll have a bid open about a week later. Um, kind of one of the hopes is if whoever wins our, uh, streets project may then wanna give us a decent deal on, on, uh, parking lot, so that's kind of, we're staggering those. And then, uh, switching, uh, switching gears, uh, to my administrator hat, um, one thing, um, and this is actually a, a, a kudos to Ron and to our police department, but this week, uh, we are, uh, switching our mobile communication systems over to FirstNet, uh, which is a, uh, which is a system, it works on AT&amp;T, uh, infrastructure, but, uh, is particular to, uh, first responders, uh, but, uh, also allows the rest of the city, um, cell phones, cellular iPads, hotspots, all that kind of stuff to be on that same system and saves us, uh, saves us a few thousand dollars a year. Um, so we've got that switch over going on this, this weekend next.
So is your question still there? Any questions for, for him?
Rule of restrictions gonna come out early?
My guess is that they will. Uh, I will say that our road restriction, I can follow, uh, the, uh, Midtown Metro District, um, so, um, they'll, they'll usually let us know three days in advance when, uh, they're going to end, uh, restrictions for the metro area. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't predict the way that it seems that the ground is, is drying fairly quickly as we go through this thaw, that we may be out of road restrictions, hopefully sooner than later.
All right, well, that brings us to our public comment. Now we're gonna take a quick five-minute break. Um, I'm gonna turn the gavel over to, uh, Victoria as I have a family event I have to attend. It's a one-time family event, so I have, I have to, oh, so here's a couple minutes. We gotta get organized up here.
Do we need a make a motion?
No, we just.
Take a moment.
Just for you to ask.
Okay.
Five minutes.
Oh. You should go.
Where's Mr. Crosby tonight? I've got something prepared for him. Why'd you go up and start running off now? What the hell is going on? You know, I've been.
McDonald's been presidential economic board that represents. One-time event every year, so at, uh.
Congratulations.
Go check here for your kids.
Because races can breed out. We'll pretend he was here. Hey, how's it going on? Who's running this show? Where's Crosby now? Nobody knows. And nobody knows where he was on J six? That's still correct? I'm the asshole. Yeah, we'll see. Mr. Maddick? There's another case, probably no one in Scott. Just so you know. Nobody needs it. I can't believe you don't know what's going on. How much should they pay you here? You know what was going on in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one? They did a FOIA request, you know this, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Just a little bit that they'll let you see is pretty revealing. Yeah, you know. But you're racist running this goddamn city. You know what? I challenge you guys to bring a suit against me for defamation, because I'm telling you that, right now, there's a racist that sits there and wherever the hell Mr. Crosby is, there's a racist there, sits right there. I've seen it. I've been seeing this for a year now. And I'm done. You know what's going on? What do you guys have to say about it? Were you here in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one? This way, son. You just want to talk? I'll keep talking.
Who's got the gavel on? Is it Matt and Tim?
Yeah, so, all right, so we're on to public comments, is that fair to say? All right, so this is an opportunity for the public to address the city council, the council not engage in discussion or take actions on the items presented at the time. However, the council may refer issues to staff for follow-up or consideration at future meetings. Speaker should state their name and home address at the podium before speaking. So I don't know if there's anyone that would like to come up?
Does anybody else want to vote first? Here, I'll vote, I'll, I'll have a microphone first. So J nine yard, thirteen eighty-six West Point Road, Orno, Minnesota. I think you guys are a bunch of fricking hypocrites. Really, you're talking Earth Day? When you took away all the penalties for trees being cut down and zero seventy-five with your ordinances? Bunch of hypocrites. How long were you stating your ordinance to protect the lake? Instead of having like little Earth Day conversations and pretending that, that you're doing something important? What am I gonna talk about that till, till I, till I'm sitting here? Listen to you guys. Guys are fricking ridiculous. As for Mr. Edwards here, today on my YouTube stream, he lied repeatedly. And it's frustrating when a city employee can't get his story straight. Mr. Edwards made three different lies today. First lie, he, uh, stated that the city of Orno is not representing Dennis Walsh. But I have right here a notice of appearance from lawyer, the undersigned attorney hereby certifies a court and council that Alyssa Ann Hartlebeg will appear for dot, 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 Dennis Avery and Walsh resident. There's one lawyer. Second lawyer, the undersigned attorney hereby notifies a court and council that J W Hayden shall appear, dot, 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 Dennis Walsh resident. Two pieces of paper. You said I should get a lawyer because I don't know what I'm talking about and I should read the paperwork here, Mr. Edwards. Here's the paperwork. These are two of them. Here's number three. This is the defendant, city of Orno, Sabran, Dennis Walsh, Orno mayor in individual and official capacity, Dennis Sabran Walsh resident. Okay? So right here, the city of Orno answered for Walsh and said, right here, come now, defendant, city of Orno, Dennis Sabran Walsh, Orno mayor in individual, official capacity, and Dennis Walsh resident. Yes, the Orno city is paying for Dennis Walsh's private business dealings. This is your tax money. These guys are happily shoveling out the door to protect Walsh. This is your money and my money. I'm paying taxes for him to, uh, for, for him to defend himself against me. And the last lie you said today, Mr. Edwards, was that I have never won against the city of Orno. You kept repeating that. You know what? I have an order from Judge Bush right here, and I'd like to give it to you, so you read it. It's in the lawsuit that I served upon you. Well, I specifically won the right for everybody who lives in Orno to harvest the wind. Orno did not appeal that. Yes, I won it. The unfortunate part is, it appears that you haven't read this at all, and I like how you're smirking and smiling. I really do, because I go to show your character. Cotton, three different lies today on my YouTube channel. I challenge you to read that.
Thank you, trainee. Anyone else? Brad?
Brad Erickson, twenty-four eighty-five Independence Road, it's unfortunate, Mr. Crosby is not here again tonight. Really, really weird if he's not fit for the office, then maybe he should just bow out. I want to bring everybody's attention back to what started over a year ago, or about a year ago now, okay? I've been coming up here, I've been telling you what's going on, I've been finding out stuff, be, you know, here and there with meetings, with you, with Adam, with, uh, Crosby and Prinum. And now I do a FOIA request and I found out, I find out that Mr. Walsh was, uh, was informed about Crosby's Proud Boy, you know, Bolt's Marquee in, that's for you, in, uh, twenty twenty-one, early twenty twenty-one, or December perhaps. He knew all about it. You know, just so you know, the current, the current target of the Antifa and BLM people is the Proud Boys. I can tell you from my experience, this group is positive. Well, just now I saw a pic they posted on Twitter going after an Orno council city, or city council member. Before this blows up, get ahead of it and know they are young punk keyboard terrorists. I don't know your city council member that they are targeting, but I'm pretty certain he's neither a racist or a white supremacist. Do you know what? I'm pretty certain he is. And I'm pretty certain he is, after everything I've seen. You haven't seen it. You can sit there and smirk all you want and act like, you guys are complicit, you know it? There's a lawsuit here coming and it names the city again because of this clown in the middle. Okay? He wants to go after me. Here's what I would suggest, if you're gonna throw shade at somebody, you probably shouldn't use the words of a slave master and child rapist. Does that make any sense to anybody up here? I don't think so. These are your heroes? These are the people you want to emulate? What's, what's this now after, uh, Mr. Crosby comes back from, uh, J six? There's a, there's a, there's an email that goes out from Ron here. Um, yep, Ron, that's you, that says, um, what the hell does it say? Something about, oh, here it is. You may be contacted by an outside group asking questions about council member Crosby. Please do not, please do not comment or answer questions. Really? That's what was going on after the J six stuff? Nobody thinks it's a big deal? You know what? It's bigger than Mr. Walsh. It's the GOP, isn't it? You know what? These guys had the, had the wherewithal to resign. The next day after this came out, there'll be more.
Thank you, Brad. Thank you. Anyone else for public comments? Okay.
No big deal, Mr. Williams, J six, were you there?
David Williams, twenty-five Weber Hill Road. Yeah, I got dragged into the sewer when I was here last month, so I apologize for Yeah, I got dragged into the sewer when I was here last month, so I apologize for that. But I do want to say, uh,
You have no idea what the sewer looks like.
You know, I was thinking about moving to Minneapolis, because I grew up near there and wanted to do, and I childhood grant paid in Orno and I figured it was time maybe to, uh, move on, but I'm so glad I did not move to Minneapolis, because, uh, I don't think that place has ever come back. And I'm very glad to be in Orno because of people like yourselves, like the city council and the mayor. Um, if it were not for you, uh, I think this would, uh, start to resemble Minneapolis.
Yeah, keep the light, keep the light. Keep the light again.
As far as, uh, yeah, January sixth, again, I said this last year, that, uh, had it been done by the left, it would have been lawless. It was the best thing since sliced bread, but because Ron did it, you know, it's still worse than the world. Uh, and I'd like to speak to council member, uh, Benson about a comment she made last month, which I thought was highly disingenuous about the police. Um, because of people like, that was her sending a bad comment here. Um, I'm very thankful that the police are here and I hope he's armed. I don't know if he is or not.
He is, look, he is fricking dog.
My ass is on the tongue.
So, uh, that end, um, you know, I think was very, uh, poorly spoken that, uh, taking him away from his, uh, job for an hour a month would somehow, uh, raise the crime rate in Orno or something like that. So that's all I have to say, but I just appreciate you guys. I hope you can withstand, there's like three people in the city that are always on, uh, next-door neighbor. Unfortunately, it's become very politicized and that's part of the reason I'm here as well, so just keep the faith.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comments? All right, I will close public comments and bring it back to council report. Alisa, do you want to start?
Sure, thank you. Just a housekeeping item initially, um, looks like I'm slated to appear, um, or be the representative to planning commission on the seventeenth of this month and I will not be able to be at that meeting. I didn't mention that to Adam previously, but I see it on here, so I just want to ensure that folks don't expect me at the planning commission on April seventeenth.
Do you want to change to, um, the fifteenth of May?
We can maybe, can I look, look at my schedule after?
You guys can, right?
Yeah, okay, thank you. I do have a couple of other, um, points to make tonight. Um, I think it is significant that Earth Day is coming up, April twenty-second. Um, we do have what's called a cleanup day in Orno that day, as we did last year. I'd like to see potentially in the future, Orno may be expanding some of their, our offerings. Um, whether or not they make big changes or small, I do believe that engaging community at events like this is significant. Um, I know Wayzata has a program this year, Madiya has in the past, um, is a great time to engage with children, citizens, discuss the, um, benefits of living in the community that we do and help folks enhance, um, what they do own in this, um, area through tree planting or native seeds or whatnot. So I do think it's a significant time to celebrate as a community and that's something I think we could look at expanding in the future. Um, I do want to mention, um, that, um, the Northwest Head of the League of Municipalities is meeting this Wednesday, that's two days, um, from now. Um, and I, I won't be the representative, um, uh, for Orno. However, I do want to mention that, um, I think it's quite exciting that our newly elected sheriff, um, DeWanna Witt will be the speaker that night at the event. And I think she is a history-making sheriff and that she's the first black woman to be elected to the position in the state of Minnesota. And I regret that I will not have a chance to meet her that night, but I look forward to hopefully crossing paths with her in the future. And, um, I would like to address the comments that were made just a moment ago, um, with regard to my respect for our police department, I believe, um, the comments that I made were intended to show a great deal of respect and, um, they came on the heels of a right along that I did with one of our officers. And as a former social worker, uh, somebody who worked closely with the police in my professional career, I have the utmost respect for the men and women who do the work of, um, policing in the city of Orno. So I regret if, if any comments I made at that meeting struck folks the wrong way, that was not my intention. Um, finally, unfortunately, some of our council is not with us tonight, but I will address these, um, comments that I have regardless. I would ask that my fellow council members consider the great toll that this ongoing situation with Mr. Erickson is taking on our residents and our staff and wider community. My suggestion to engage with the League of Minnesota Cities for no cost professional mediation is just one possible solution. And without assigning blame, I think it behooves us as the elected officials and representatives of this community to deep, dig deep and consider the fact that we were elected to do the hard work that comes along with city governments. So my suggestion is just that, it's a suggestion, it doesn't mean that it's the right solution. But I urge my fellow council members to consider the fact that no action is still a choice, it's an action in itself. And, uh, while we can't necessarily control what, uh, happens at all times, we can certainly have a hand in, uh, making the choices that we do as elected officials, um, working towards solution in this area, something that I think would really serve us well. We need not run from difficult work. I think that's why we were put here. We each were elected to do this hard work and, and it is hard at times, but this is the time to dig deep and to consider how our actions can affect this community from this day forward. Uh, so I urge you again to consider alternatives, if those that I presented are not to your liking. And I'll leave it at that. That's all, thank you.
Thanks, Councilwoman Benson.
Uh, are you insinuating we're running from difficult work now?
What we've been here.
And, uh, so, I'm not, not really sure what the point of that statement was, but, um, and then, so, uh, the only public announcement I guess I had is the, uh, also bring attention that the, uh, the brush site is now open, so, uh, that's available. It's been closed because it's been soft, so it was a little delayed in doing that, so, but now it's open. So that's all I have.
Okay, um, so, just kind of to bring us home, most of my calls have been around, what is the cleanup day? So it's pretty popular. This is usually the one that has the line around the corner. Um, so, April twenty-second is the date? What time is it, Adam?
Uh, eight to two.
Eight to two, kind of. And then, did we adjust the brush site hours? Because I know that was part of the top. We did, okay, so new, new hours?
New hours, new offerings, so, um, I guess I'm built on that.
Yeah.
Um, so with the brush sites, uh, we moved the, uh, we moved the other, um, service elements that we were doing at, uh, the public works site out to the brush site, so it's, uh, the leaf and quote, grat, but weed and grass clippings, uh, collection as well as issuance of, of mulch and compost, uh, now, so we're doing it all out there.
Okay.
And then also the hours changed and some of the, the, the rules changed a little bit. We're now accepting up to three cubic yards of brush, um, per resident, just for free. After that, it's eight bucks a cubic yard. For non-residents, um, it's eight dollars a cubic yard, uh, from the gate of.
Could we make sure that we push some, maybe social out on that? It's designed? Up to eight hours?
Yeah, it went out in the utility billing. I know, I just looked at that and then, um, but yeah, we'll, we'll put it back out on the site again.
Oh, thank you. That is all I have.
Okay, so if there's, if you're ready to move to the closed session, what I'd ask is that you read the language and then there be a motion of the second to a vote.
Okay. All right, so this meeting will be closed as permitted by the attorney-client privilege, Minnesota statute thirteen D, dot, zero five, subdivision three B, to discuss litigation strategy regarding Lake Minnetonka Real Estate Two LLC versus City of Orno. Do I have a first?
Yes.
And a second?
Yes, a second then.
All my paper?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so it'll take a five-minute recess to, just get, get the trigger? Thanks, thanks for guiding me. I didn't know that I was there.